Good evening. We're going to call together, call to come together for the St. Lucy County Board of County Commissioners's regular meeting for Tuesday, August 9th, 6:00 p.m. Howard, would you like to lead us in the invocation? Please rise and we'll do the pledge right after that.
I would remind everybody as we begin the invocation this evening that school is starting and we just pray for the safety of our children as well. Gracious Father, we quiet our hearts and minds for just a minute this evening, pausing to give thanks for the blessings in our lives. At the hectic pace in which we live, it is easy to overlook or take for granted the love of family and friends, or something as simple as, or as beautiful as a sunrise or a sunset. Help us to take the time each day to enjoy this journey we call life, to let those know who are special to us, understand just how we feel about them. And if we can help someone in need, never let us hesitate to reach out and be that blessing to others. At this time, we ask for wisdom and understanding, discernment and clarity of purpose as we gather to do the public's business. May your blessings continue on this county, this country and all its people. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're going to open up with the Sustainability District Agenda.
Good evening. I'd like to call the, to order the Sustainability District on Tuesday, August 9th at 6:00 p.m. We'll open to general public comment. Anybody wishing to approach the board?
This is for the sustainability-
This is for sustainability?
Not for the regular meeting. No ma'am.
But thank you.
You don't want to talk about sustainability. You, you'll come under the regular.
Oh, okay. Seeing no one, I'll close public comment. Motion for the consent agenda-
We have approval-
Excuse me, Mrs., Miss, I'd like to have a comment please before you do that. This is to extend it for two years, correct?
Correct. My understanding, yes.
And again, I've had this conversation multiple times throughout the years. When I went back and researched in the period of the last five to six years, there's been right at 100 loans written. So again, I'm going to ask this board if it's, if they're open to having the conversation. There's five PACE approved programs in the state of Florida. I think that it's wrong and we're doing a disservice to our residents here in St. Lucy County by allowing only one provider here. The loans are not being written. If you go back and look at the history, the numbers did rise when I had brought this up three or four years ago. And so I will not be supporting this consent agenda tonight because I think it's time to open up the county to all people that are approved for the PACE programs, not just one. So I'd like for you to call an individual roll call, please.
Any other comment?
Madam Chair, just simply saying that the Solar Energy Loan Fund has had practiced and had extreme consumer support and protections greater than some of the others in the state and it's actually a model such so that they actually presented in Congress and as a leading lender in the green and sustainable area. So I will be supporting it for those reasons.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Or is that my motion? That was my motion, right?
No, I had a motion already.
Oh, you did. I knew that.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Townsend?
No ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes ma'am.
Chair Bartz?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. There is nothing scheduled on the regular agenda. A motion to adjourn unless-
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, we're back to the irregular agenda. Now I will entertain anything that is excluding public hearing items on the agenda for tonight for public comment. Yes ma'am.
Hello. My name is Kayla Short. Forgive me because I'm both passionate and nervous. I live at 10216 Carlton Road. My topic is the proposed M Mine Ranch, M Ranch Mine on Carlton Road. We have a lot of concerns with operating a mine on Carlton Road. Tonight, I'm going to focus my concern for the impact it may have on the environmental preservation of Ag-5, specifically Paleo Hammock Preserve and Teague Hammock Preserve. It makes me sad and angry that this can even be considered. We cannot let this project move forward as it is not compatible with our Ag-5 community. The county has the power to preserve large parcels as they stay on their own website. I'm going to read part of a paragraph from their website homepage. "St. Lucy County has taken great steps to preserve our 100-plus year history and heritage. The county has secured more than 11,000 acres of environmentally sensitive lands for conservation and passive recreation." After reading this, I asked this panel why you would allow a rock mine to be backed up to Paleo Hammock and across the street from Teague Ranch. I'm sorry. These lands are preserved conservation that this panel of commissioners should be proud to have put in place. These preserves with their wildlife, their surroundings and their natural beauty did not go with a coquina rock mine. The rock mine would affect and possibly devastate these two preserves along with surrounding properties. Please consider future generations and environmental consequences to be motivating factors for denial of this project. I am proud of these two preserves along with all the preserves set aside by the county and you deserve to be the proud of all the work you have done. It's not just the locals and the community that enjoy these preserves. People come from all over to experience the animals, hiking, scenery and horseback riding at both Paleo Hammock and Teague Hammock Preserve. Voting yes for this rock mine will even destroy what you yourself believed in and worked so hard for. Thank you for your responsibility in preserving the remaining agricultural lands, environmental and water resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak? That is excluding public hearing items. Good evening.
Good evening. We're here-
Please introduce yourselves too, please.
Marjorie Harrell.
Mary Servin.
Glenda Johnson.
Good evening.
Okay. We're here from the Juneteenth, I mean, Juneteenth Festival Committee to thank you for your support. And a lot of you came out and to different things. You were out to buy flower events. But we want to thank you very much. For the second year in a row, we have made the national news for our Walk With The Children over to the Recreation Center where they have their part of the festival. Mr. Tipton, thank you very much for your support in the background.
Matt's not here.
No.
I hear he's right there.
Hey, Matt.
All right.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. I got it, I got it written down because I know I can't remember no more. Afonso?
Jefferson.
Jefferson, Matt, the new lady who is the Assistant Director. I can't think of your name, but thank you very much. Willie, we want to thank you for all the work that you did. And, and believe it or not, it rained on Saturday, rained hard. We prayed that it stopped and then it started back, but people stood in the rain for that concert. And the concert went on longer than it was supposed to, but they enjoyed it. It was a good time. And we just appreciate everything that you have done to help us enjoy our freedom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak on non-public hearing items? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. On article, on number five, we have approval in the minutes of the July 5th.
Move approval.
Okay.
Second.
Do I have to do them all? Can we approve them all?
We do them all.
All right, so I'll just mention what they are. The minutes from the B O C C regular meeting on July 5th, the minutes from the B O C C workshop budget, day one, July 6th, day two, July 7th, and day three of July 8th. All those in favor, signify by saying, by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Right now, we have Proclamations Approval. The first one will be Resolution Number 22134 proclaiming August 2022 as Sunnier Palms Members Lodge, Inc., 30th Anniversary Month in St. Lucy County. And I believe I'm going to come down there. If you are, Mr. Wall?
I am.
All right, I'll come down and this young lady will read the proclamation.
A resolution proclaiming August 2022 as Sunnier Palms Members Lodge, Inc., 30th Anniversary Month in St. Lucy County, Florida. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucy County, Florida, has made the following determinations. Sunny Palms Nudist Park opened in Florida City in 1948 and was a winter home to naturists nudist until 1984 when the absentee owner sold the native pine forest to DuPont. A steering committee organized to relocate and formed a Florida not-for-profit corporation, Sunnier Palms Members Lodge, Inc., Sunny volunteers are great stewards of the property and the historic waterway which dissects the property. Thanks to local advisors from Audubon, Conservative Alliance, county environmental planners and forestry. Decades of controlled burns contribute to Sunnier being acknowledged as a fire-wise community. Sunny vegetable gardens are awarded Slow Foods Snail of Approval. Sunny maintains a Florida nursery license requiring inspection of approximately 100 species of plants for occasional sales, donations and workshops. F W C permits aquaculture, aquaculture in Sunny Palms. In the 1980s, Middle Cove was listed in the First World Guide to Nude Beaches. Sunny recruited local attorneys Pete McDonald and Michael Kessler to have St. Lucy Court and law enforcement acknowledge the Florida Supreme Court distinction between innocent skinny dipping and indecent exposure. St. Lucy County is now the first and only Florida county with both a naturist nudist community and clothing optional beach Blind Creek. Sunny is working with county planners to make the best use of the acreage-zoned neighborhood commercial. Sunny continues to grow purchasing and additional 2.5 acres hooking up to public water and is in the process of upgrading the electrical system throughout. Sunny is intended to be here for many future generations of nurturist naturists. Members donate their time and expertise. The corporation prohibits members from any financial gain from the property, even if sold. In 2020, COVID closed Sunny gates to all members. Sunny will resume welcoming visitors next month. In November, Sunny will host a 30th anniversary celebration open to the public. Sunny chose St. Lucy County due to the county's commitment to preserve land. The city of Fort Pierce preserves the historic agriculture, the art and cultural history of the area and the commitment by the county to grow smart. Sunny is happy for the choice made 30 years ago, which is a good reason to celebrate. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucy County, Florida. This board does hereby proclaim August 2022 as Sunny Palms Members Lodge, Inc., 30th Anniversary Month in St. Lucy County, Florida. Passed and duly adopted this ninth day of August 2022.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Townsend, second by Commissioner Bartz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Would you like to say a few words?
I'd just like to thank the board for the recognition and it's a pleasure being in St. Lucy County. And we'd like to thank you for your continued support and working with the county. Thank you.
Thank you. You'd like to get a picture? Next, we have Resolution 22136 proclaiming August 7th through the 13th, 2022 as Fort Pierce Farmers Market Week in St. Lucy County, Florida. And tonight, this will be accepted by Josh May, Kia Fontaine, Carol Roberts, Will Galette and Brenda Gibbons. Madam Secretary.
A resolution proclaiming August 7th through 13th, 2022 as Fort Pierce Farmers Market Week in St. Lucy County, Florida. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucy County, Florida, has made the following determinations. Treasure Coast farmers and ranchers provide citizens with the access to healthful, locally and regionally produced foods through farmers market, which is, which are expanding and evolving to accommodate the demand for diverse array of agriculture products. Farmers market and other agriculture direct marketing outlets provide infrastructure to assist in the distribution of farm and value-added products, thereby contributing approximately $9 billion each year to the U.S. economy. Farmers market serve as a significant outlet by which small to medium, new and beginning and veteran agriculture producers market agriculture products, generating revenue that supports the sustainability of family farms and the revitalization of rural communities nationwide. St. Lucy County recognizes the importance of expanding agriculture marketing opportunities that assist and encourage the next generation of farmers and ranchers generate farm income to help stimulate business development and job creation, build community connections through rural and urban linkages and much more. The downtown Fort Pierce Farmers Market has been offering local grown fresh produce, fruits, seafood, beef, poultry and many other items that are products of local farmers, ranchers and others since 1997. The downtown Fort Pierce Farmers Market is a Saturday morning tradition in Fort Pierce and annually ranks as one of the best farmers markets in Florida. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucy County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the week of August 7th through 13th, 2022 as Fort Pierce Farmers Market Week in St. Lucy County, Florida. And call all observants to the attention of our citizens, we encourage St. Lucy County residents to celebrate Farmers Market with the appropriate observance and activities. Passed and duly adopted this ninth day of August 2022.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zdowski, second by Commissioner Hutchinson. Would you like to say a few words?
All in favor?
All in favor.
All in favor?
Yeah, first off, I'd like to thank St. Lucy County for their continued support of our Fort Pierce Farmers Market where we're on our 26th year that we're very proud of. And just also like to emphasize the importance of supporting local small businesses and also local farmers and ranchers and just, and know how important it is to instill these traditions to the future generations because it's getting harder and harder to keep things like this going. So we just like to really support them. And we also are having a contest right now for America's favorite farmer market. We're first in the state currently, seventh in the southeast and 27th in the nation. And there is a QR code that you can scan to vote for your favorite farmer's market. And so we'd like to keep those rankings up and possibly move up nationwide. And we just really appreciate you guys and supporting us.
We see the QR code here. Is it on a Facebook page? Is it on a website? So we can send them. You have a little time to advertise. Who do they call to help support?
Yeah, we have until September 19th to vote. That's the final day. So there's still some time. And it is on our social media that you can find it on our Facebook page and-
Yeah.
What's the name of the face-
Or you could come down to the Farmers Market on Saturdays and you can scan your QR code and support some of our local vendors-
There you go.
And say hi.
It's a Saturday morning tradition. We like to keep that up. Thank you guys so much.
Because the public does watch this, what's, what can they go to on Facebook and look to find the page?
FortPierceFarmersMarket.com. And on Facebook, it's just Fort Pierce Farmers Market.
Fort Pierce Farmers Market. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold that proclamation.
You should be let.
As you should be. Thank you guys.
Commissioner, I have a little pamphlet for each of the board members.
Oh, okay. Make sure I give it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Aw, thank you.
Okay, moving right along. We're on to number seven. This will be a presentation of TC Makers Update. And tonight, Andy Treadwell from Indian River State College and Pete Tesh from St. Lucy County's EDC. Good evening, sir. Twice in one day.
Mr. Chair, thank you. It's always a pleasure. It's the first time I've ever given a presentation here in front of the Board of County Commissioners. No, it's just over there by the podium, but I thought some visuals would be nice tonight. I am joined by Mr. Pete Tesh, the President of the St. Lucy County EDC. Pete has been a pivotal part of this project, as have some other partners. One of the best benefits of being the campus president of the Indian River State College Pruitt Campus is that the EDC is located with us. And, you know, I get to discuss with Pete all the times the many issues that are facing the county, economic projects that are moving forward. And one of the things we discuss a lot is the skills gap that currently exists across this treasure coast. 2017, 2019, 2021, continue to reiterate that we, we have issues. We need more nurses. We need more healthcare workers. We need folks in logistics and distribution. And, you know, above all else, we need industrial skills trade workers and we need folks who can handle themselves on a manufacturing floor. And those latter two are where this project kind of stems from. So give me just one second and I'll pull it up. But as Pete and I were discussing the skills gap, we started to think about the project. We know we have a skills gap, but, you know, you just got to start asking, why do we have a skills gap? And one of those issues is right here. Part of this problem, is this coming up? Is, is that three in 10, or less than three in 10 parents would, you know, encourage their children to go into the manufacturing field. And that's abysmal. That's something that we had to address. So this project began at Indian River State College with the support of Dr. Moore and our District Board of Trustees. We went out, we saw some partners, you know, Mr. Tesh and the EDC were one of our first calls. Brian Bauer and the Career Source Research Coast. But we also reached out across our region. So we brought in the Okachobe Economic Development Council. We reached out to the Indian River Chamber, which is where their economic development arm. And we reached down into Martin County's BDB to bring these folks into a room and said, we've got to try something. Three in 10 is not going to cut it, especially as these businesses are moving to our area. I joked with Pete just a second ago. He's got 75 ongoing projects and 5.3 million square feet of industrial space. Right now, the skills gap is going to grow unless we start working on something. So this group came together as a coalition. We kept it small, but we all decided that we were going to make an investment in trying to address a overarching hearts and minds type campaign. Because really, the perception doesn't meet reality. If you've been on the floors recently of Oculus or Tamco, Maverick Piper, it doesn't matter. The manufacturing floor, not to be cliche, but it's not our grandfather's manufacturing floor. They're cleaner. They're more filled with high technology. And folks need to understand that, that these are great jobs and there's only a little bit of training required to get on. So we started with a simple premise. What do, what do, what do young people or what do folks out in the community who might want retraining, what do they want? They want jobs that provide good benefits. They want good paying jobs, interesting and rewarding work. They want to be able to use their brain and be challenged, stability and security, and they want to build skills on the job. A lot of our manufacturing today really does this. So what we did is, as a group, we came together, we're going to create a public service campaign. And I failed to mention earlier, one of our key members of this project, Josh Brown with Sinclair Media, represents all of the W P E C properties, websites, Channel 12 is what you're probably most familiar with. But he came in and offers us the opportunity to work on a public service announcement campaign. So everything that we invested was matched by Sinclair, which made our campaign go further. So the goal is, we're going to improve the perception of manufacturing and skilled trade careers. We're going to help close the gap between that perception and reality. And most importantly, we're going to help expand the pipeline of highly qualified candidates for our region. Because folks like Pete Tesh and myself and probably you all as, as an elected body are tired of hearing our employers come in and go, hey, we just brought this big business. We're struggling to fill these roles. We wanted to change that perception. So where we ended up was TCmakers.com. I'm here tonight to make sure that you know that this is a brand that we're going to continue to feed. It is, it helps with training. It points folks to Indian River State College. It points folks to Career Source and jobs that are available, job fairs. And most importantly, it's starting to work with the employers in the area about what jobs they have available. Most importantly, it serves as a tool, a communications tool, to really tell folks that manufacturing is there for the taking and you can get into it right now and here's why. And I don't want to tell you anymore about the website or really the logistics of the campaign. I just thought that we'd show you a couple of videos and won't take more, there's three, it won't take more than five minutes. This really tells the story. The first is going to be an overarching, this is, you know, a campaign that would be on CBS 12, more of a generalized video. And the second are two testimonials by folks who have come up in our own community and now find themselves working in industrial skills trades or the manufacturing careers.
Some decisions are easy. Others take a little more time. But you owe it to yourself to look at all your options. Meet the ones who are making it, making it work, making it move. These are the makers of the treasure coast. Make your move. Explore great careers at TCmakers.com.
So again, that's a 30-second spot that you would see on CBS 12 or Channel 34. And we're, we're starting to work beyond Sinclair, but I'll, I'll get to that in just a second. we're, we're starting to work beyond Sinclair, but I'll get to that in just a second.
My name is Victoria Madison. I am 23, and I recently got into trucking. I started my first job at Armalini right out of school. The training isn't as long as a normal college, so you can really get into your career fast. If you're 18 and you aren't sure what you want to do, you can go into trucking or a field like trucking and make a great income, start your career young. And you only have to go to school for a few months. I've been working here for about three months. I love it. I love trucking. And I see the most amazing places. And I'm getting paid to do it. I enjoy every day that I'm working here. One of the good things about trucking is most of the companies will pay for your tuition, fully reimburse you. And Armalini did it for me, and that helped me a lot. I would definitely recommend this. If you love to travel, you see like three states a day. It's amazing. You don't get to do that on any really other job like that. Trucking is everywhere. You always have a job. There's a need for truckers, and there always will
And then one final video. I think this one's my favorite. IRSC shout out.
Hi, I'm Casey. I've been welding for about five years now. I started out here at Project Lift when I was 16. I really had no idea what I was going to do for a career, you know? I remember walking around and seeing the back shop and seeing them welding and saying, I want to do that. Went through the program, graduated, went to IRSC welding program and got my certifications there. IRSC taught me a lot of valuable things that I definitely would have, would not have learned in the field. That really put me ahead choosing to go into the trades, not having to go to school for four years and then try to pay off all the money I borrowed. I have no student debt. I've been working at a boat company doing aluminum TIG. I've been there for about six months now. And I've already gotten like two raises. I would really definitely recommend welding or any type of trade, really. It's a really satisfying feeling, you know, seeing everything coming together perfectly and building this beautiful part. And it comes out great. I think that's my favorite part about it.
And I really liked that young lady, but as I said at the EDC luncheon a couple months ago, be on the lookout, right? Motley Crue t-shirt, IRSC trained and plays with fire. That woman is a badass. So there are a number of things we continue to do to, to work on this pipeline to close the skills gap. As you all know, Indian River State College is launching its Advanced Workforce Training Complex, which is really going to be industrial skills trade and manufacturing centered. That's still planned for March of 2023. We continue to work on apprenticeship programs for the businesses that are coming in. And we meet, you know, almost daily, Pete and I do, on how to address these things, how to use the college, you know, work with the folks in the community. But an overarching change hearts and minds campaign continues to be necessary. We've got to change that perception. We want seven out of 10 parents going, yeah, I would be proud if my child didn't go to the university, didn't go to the military, but started a career right here locally with one of our outstanding manufacturers. So the next steps are this. A, I wanted to come this evening with, with Mr. Tesh and just show you that TC Makers exists. We're going to continue to work on this brand. We have the campaign slated through the end of December. But we are going to be looking for partners down the line. It's time that we bring in all of our counties. It's time that we work with our school districts. And more importantly, we'll work with the local businesses that this really does benefit. So Pete and I, we're discussing how to move forward in a more formal nature. This required an investment, and we ran it through our foundation. But we're looking at the possibility of a 501(c)(3) or perhaps a direct support organization under the scope of the college to really make this thing go. But I do want to thank our partners. I want to thank our board and our president one more time because this is unique thinking, and it can help us close that skills gap.
I can only reiterate that not everybody's college material, but there's pathways to the middle class. And you may say, I like to say, it's dirty hands, clean money. And I'm, I'm very pleased with the progress you've already made. It diversifies our, our community.
Well, Mr. Chair, I might remind you that at Indian River State College, we do do all of the skills training. So I always tell folks, careful with the colleges and for everybody, because we really get down into the quick training and we can do a little bit of everything.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
And Andy, I've briefly spoken to you about this, and I presented the suggestion to the TDC, Tourist Development Council, as a way of doing employment tourism. You know, if you're going on vacation, come to St. Lucie, come to the Treasure Coast, find a new career. So I'd like to help and, and work on developing that. We have to stay within the confines of the TDC tax that's available. It would have to be just for the, the tourism side, as opposed to relocation or anything like that. So, so we're working through some of those elements. But I'd really like to get maybe more in depth with you and even bring in Martin and Indian River from that standpoint, and maybe collaborate from their tourism side, because we all need workers. And so if that was something we could, could help to move forward, you have the provisions on, on the college with your visual arts groups and, and all that. We could create the commercials or whatever the case. But the Tourism Council was keen on the thought process of trying to change that, that element to do employment tourism. So if that's something we could, we could help to work on, I'm open to, to meeting and talking through it.
Commissioner, thank you for the support. Absolutely. I have my commitment, and I'll, I'll follow up. The best thing about a creative project is we can get very creative on, on how to get it into lanes.
I just have to keep it in the, in the, the legal lane of what the tax is about, so.
Understand. One of my favorite Dr. Mooreisms, or Moore's Code, as we like to call it around IRSC, is that if it's not illegal, immoral, unethical, we find a way to say yes, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you so much. Thank you both. Next up, we have the Consent Agenda, number eight. Is there anything that any commissioner would like to pull for discussion?
I would. Conversation, 8B2.
8B2?
And 8C6.
And Mr. Chair, I'm going to ask to comment on 8C2.
Okay. We'll start with 8B2.
My, my question is just, which Mr. McIntyre will probably answer this. Are we going to go out for bids?
Well, I believe we already are doing that. This is for lobbying, state lobbying. We already are either in the process or planning on doing that, is my understanding.
Okay. Thank you. And then, go ahead. Do you have one after that question?
You had 8C6.
C2 is, is a county deed to the Creekside Community Development District. Creekside is a, is a subdivision or development, really in the western part of, of the urban area out there. They have a community development district. We got a property through a tax deed sale, and the community development district, which is a unit of special government, would like to get the property. They really are controlling the infrastructure out there. They've agreed to reimburse us for the cost of the tax deed process so the county comes out whole on the money. And so we, we felt from a staff perspective that it was appropriate to do that. And so we're recommending approval.
Thank you. I just want to iterate, you know, this, this plan has, this project has been in place for some time. And there are some environmental concerns that are part of their original plan for restoration and filter marsh areas. And you want to come, tell me something about that? I see the representative is here, but I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, there's some things that haven't been done for some period of time. The previous representative that I talked to wasn't able to move that forward. And I understand, Brian, you are the new representative for Creekside. And I just want to kind of get an idea from you. Are they moving forward with the restoration projects that, that were agreed to in the previous plan, in the original plan?
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Zadaski, Brian Nolan with La Ceda and Associates for the record. I'm representing D.R. Horton. D.R. Horton is now the master developer of Creekside. They are in the process of going through and acquiring all of the parcels. We still are, there are a few parcels left to acquire surrounding, I think this is in parcel F of the PUD. I could be mistaken. There's a lot of parcels. So this is one of the ones. It is a new team. It's a new builder. It's a new team. They've brought in all new sets of consultants, myself, Kim Lee Horn, our civil engineer, Jacob Lawson's here tonight. And yes, we are moving forward on all of those environmental improvements. Right now, we're in the process of getting a survey of the entire parcel, which is taking a long time. All the surveyors are extremely busy. We do have, the parcel C is under review with staff. We're working on permit drawings for the filter marsh and the, and the various other environmental improvements. But yes, we, we, we are moving forward with everything as planned.
And I appreciate the, you know, the changeover in the team and so on and so forth. It was a commitment back then from the Board of County Commissioners in place at that time. And with a new team, I understand there's going to be some, some challenges of getting started and getting, getting it moving. I just, you know, this is a, you know, good friendly move for the county to, to provide and give its property back. It's probably worth some money. But just in a good faith effort, we're trying to do that here today. And I just wanted to see where we were on, on that restoration process.
No, and we very much appreciate the County Attorney's Office. I inquired about this several, just a few months ago, I believe. And I was actually on vacation when the email came through from Victoria, and I was, I was shocked. So no, you, the county's made good faith efforts. We're making good faith efforts to clean up. We know it's a legacy community. It's been around for a little while. There's a lot of unraveling and some re-revealing that we're doing. And, and we appreciate the board and staff's patience as we, as we work through, as we work through all of that. It's, it's, it's quite a task.
Thank you very much for the input. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Chairman, item C6, that is approval of a budget increase for the county's impact fee consultants, primarily the legal consultants. The board will recall, we engaged legal consultants, impact fee consultants some time ago on roads, parks, public buildings, libraries, there's probably one I'm missing, public, I said public buildings. But in any event, we, we did a comprehensive review of all of our existing ordinances. We updated our fees. We went through a, a public hearing process to try to, to make it fair and equitable and legal. There are a number of required changes that we had to make because of state legislative changes and court cases. So it was important to get experts to help us with that. With the Fire EMS, we also felt like that's something that really needed expert review. The Fire District hired their own expert, Dr. Nicholas, who actually was our, our first expert back in the 1980s. He helped us with our first, our road impact fee. He was one of the consultants on that. He's a nationally recognized expert. Doesn't really get much better than he. But we felt like we also needed the same kind of legal expertise to, to do that. We had discussions with the Fire District about them perhaps reimbursing us for the cost of this. But they felt like they, they paid for the main consultant that did their study with the numbers and everything, and that since it was a county ordinance, the county should really be responsible for the fee there. So we decided to just to move on, and we're, we're here in front of you recommending approval.
Any other questions? I just want to mention that under Public Works, number one and two, the approval to Harmony Heights Phase III is, item is related to the American Rescue Plan. Also two, which is the Stormwater Master Plan, this item is also related to the American Rescue.
And Mr. Chair, I'd like to just recognize Wayne Boyer and Paul Langle from the Fire District here today on this item.
I stole my thunder, but that's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
With, with that, can I have a motion to approve?
We approve consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. We'll move right along to public hearings. First one is the administration for the update of the St. Lucie County Fire and Rescue Impact Fee Study.
Mr. Chairman, John DeKanich will be handling this item.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. John DeKanich, Innovation and Performance Division Director. The item that you have before you is the first hearing for the update of the St. Lucie County Fire and Rescue Impact Fee, the 2022 study. As our county attorney indicated, that was completed and performed by the St. Lucie County Fire District. Chapter 24 of the, the county code establishes that the county fire district is the sole provider of fire EMS services in the county. Additionally, the county collects the fire EMS protection impact fees in order to provide the fire district with funds to adequately provide for fire EMS services for all county residents, including residents of the city. This fee goes back to, it started in 2000, was first imposed. As was earlier mentioned, Dr. Nicholas updated in 2021. He did a review of the county, the Fire District's fee. They did a study. The, the final one was on May 10th, and it was adopted by the Fire District in July of this year. And the St. Lucie County Planning and Zoning Board approved the recommendation to the Board of County Commission to approve the update of the Fire Rescue Impact Fee, the 2022 update, and the ordinance adoption. And they did that on July 21st, 2022. Similar to the county's impact fees, these will be incremental increases consistent with the statutory requirement based upon whether the increase is, you know, less than 25% or over 25%. It's built into their schedule in the ordinance. Another one question is, you know, what's the impact to single family? We're currently, since 2017, it's been $617 impact fee for a single family unit. And as of, excuse me, as of October 1st, that number beginning on January 1st, 2023, the ordinance goes into effect October 1st, but the increase, because it's a 90-day period for any increase, but it'll go to $650. With that, Mr. Chairman, I will, I know you already mentioned, but Deputy Chief Langle and Captain Boyer are here from the Fire District if there are any specific questions on the, the ordinance or their, their plans.
Any questions of the chief or the captain? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who would, would discuss this subject matter? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing.
We approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zadaski, a second by Commissioner Bart. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let me just clarify the intent of the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me read it.
It, it was the first public hearing of two. So your, your vote to approve it is to move it to the second public hearing, which will be held on Tuesday, September 6th.
To adopt.
To final adopt at 6:00 PM or soon thereafter. This is just the first of two readings. We're treating this like a land development regulation. It's a, perhaps a conservative approach, but it's what we use for the other impact fees. So your vote today, we'll, we'll just push it forward to the next public hearing.
So we'll get to see you, good gentlemen, again. Thank you.
Thank you, members.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Under nine.
All those in favor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Got ahead of myself. No more coffee. Okay. Number two is the county attorney. I believe this will be Mr. Saddlely that'll be presenting, or will it be you?
Actually, I think it's me. I don't know if Mr. Saddlely wants to. He can. But this is a, a public hearing on the economic avalon tax exemption related to the proposed FedEx ground package system. The board is aware that this particular program is a potential, it's a tool for economic development that we have used since 1992. It's voter approved in a referendum for 10-year periods. Actually, you know, we have a referendum coming up in the next few weeks on this particular issue. On this, on this particular item in front of the board, this involves a FedEx ground package system. It's a new facility. It's a 245,000 square foot warehouse facility with associated parking. The company has added 46 jobs to its workforce. We have, according to the statute, we asked the property appraiser to review the application to determine eligibility. They have, she has done that. We are proposing to, on a sliding scale over a 10-year period, grant them an exemption. This does not apply to school taxes, fire taxes, municipal taxes. It's just county taxes. It, it only applies to the building, not the land. So it's just the improvements. And it's, it is performance driven, so that if they don't maintain their jobs, the ordinance provides that we can come in and rescind the, the exemption going, on a going forward basis. This is a public hearing, Mr. Chairman. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone from? Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to talk about this subject matter? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing.
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'd just like to add that this county is investing more dollars in Port St. Lucie and in Fort Pierce than the municipalities themselves.
Mr. Chair, if I could, just real quick, just to remind everybody out, as Dan said, we do have the ad valorem tax exemption item on the primary ballot. In-person voting is scheduled for Tuesday, August 23rd. And then also mail-out ballots will be, you know, starting to be mailed back in, I believe, on the 13th of August. So that is in process. It is the request of the voters of all of St. Lucie County for reauthorization of the ad valorem tax abatement. It would be the fourth time. As Dan said, it started in 92. We did it again in 2002 and then 2012. And so it is one of the tools in our toolbox that we have used successfully. Obviously, the FedEx is, is just another example of that. And so we're just, you know, making sure the voters are aware of it. One of the questions we've gotten from some of our friends in the HOAs, particularly in Port St. Lucie, is they said, didn't we just vote on this back in December? And they did. But they have to vote on it again because it has to, each, each jurisdiction has to, has to process the ad valorem tax abatement. And I think is, you know, really important points that Dan made. All performance-based, it's temporary and it only, only, it only affects, you know, our general fund taxes. It doesn't affect the school district, the mosquito control, law enforcement and all of that. So thank you for a few minutes just to bring that up.
No, thank you, Mr. Saddleley.
Mr. Chair, just to follow up, it's, it's important to also state, you know, again, the reimbursement. This is not a cash giveaway. Those days are long over. We learned about the, the hard way back 20 years ago or so. And so it's important that it is a tool. And unless the, if the investment doesn't come, then those jobs don't come. So it's a, it's a win-win deal. And again, it helps us to compete against other counties in the state and quite frankly, across the nation.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along. C, Planning and Development Services. This is the Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment for Recreation Element to Incorporate 10 Years Parks and Recreation Master Plan. This is an adoption hearing.
All right. Good evening, Chairman Mitchell and members of the board. For the record, Ben Bolser, Assistant Planning and Development Services Director. Item 9C1 is the adoption hearing for a text amendment to incorporate the adopted 10-year Parks and Recreation Master Plan by reference into the Comprehensive Plan. In accordance with public notice requirements outlined in the Land Development Code, public notice for this item was advertised in the St. Lucie News Tribune on Thursday, July 28th, 2022. On January 11th, 2022, this board adopted the 10-year Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which provides a strategy for the creation, optimization, and maintenance of the county's parks and recreation assets. Pursuant to Florida statutes, the board can choose to include documents by reference into the Comprehensive Plan. Objective 7 dot 1 dot 4 within the 2018 Comprehensive Plan references the March 20, or 2002 Community Park Systems Master Plan. The subject amendment looks to replace this reference with the 2022 Parks and Recreation Master Plan. On May 19th, 2022, the Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as a local planning agency, unanimously recommended the board adopt the proposed Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment. And on June 7th, 2022, the board approved the transmittal of the amendment to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity and corresponding agencies. On July 5th, 2022, staff received notice that no comments were received on the proposal. The amendment is consistent with the standards of review set forth in the Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan. And staff recommends the board adopt ordinance number 2022 dash 22 to incorporate the 10-year Parks and Recreation Master Plan by reference into the recreation element of the Comprehensive Plan. Thank you very much, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Bolser? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this subject matter? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Townsend and a second by Commissioner Hutchinson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to C two. And this item is quasi-judicial.
Mr. Chair, for the record, I'll start. I've spoken with the applicant many, many months ago and staff.
Thank you. Mr. Bart?
I've not had conversation.
Yeah?
Just with staff.
Mr. Townsend, Mr.?
Staff and the daughter of Mr. Haynes briefly spoke to me at an event.
Okay, and I spoke to staff. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Mitchell, members of the board. The subject item is a proposed major adjustment to the Lone Pine PUD Final Site Plan to relocate a driveway for Lot 13 owned by Mr. Haynes. This evening's public hearing was duly noticed in the local newspaper, sign posted on the premises, and notification letters mailed by staff to owners of property within 500 feet of the petition site. In 2004, the Board of County Commissioners authorized a final PUD rezoning and plan to develop a 23-lot, single-family subdivision known as Lone Pine PUD, as displayed on site. This is generally south of the White City area, east of 25th Street and west of Citrus Avenue. It terminates in a cul-de-sac adjacent to county preserve lands. The development plan accounted for required green and open space and designated particular driveway locations within the site. Those driveway locations were designated due to the collective common area strip that's located between the road right-of-way and particular lots within the development. The applicants in designing their proposed home are seeking to relocate their driveway location to the east. Typically, this would have been a minor modification evaluated by staff because the size of their proposed driveway is displayed on screen and the relocated area is comparable, does not adversely impact native trees or vegetation, or decrease the open space. However, in the board's original approval in 2004, there was an explicit condition of approval that stated that no alterations may be permitted without modification of the PUD by the Board of County Commissioners. Therefore, the petition this evening required a public hearing, evaluation, and action by this board to support or authorize the driveway relocation. Again, based upon the display and the Development Review Committee's support for this amendment, the driveway relocation will result in only a single driveway connection, not an additional driveway location, no net reduction in green and open space or native trees from the lot and development. Therefore, staff is supportive of the Board of County Commissioners' adoption of Resolution 2022 dash 139 authorizing this modification of the Lone Pine PUD specifically for Lot 13, as authorized by the HOA as well.
Thank you. Any questions of, of Mr. Benton?
I have a question. So Cory, this was done to a board prior to us. Is there any, I guess this is actually a question more from my table, but is there any way that we can go in and clean up language? Because I don't know that it would be the intent of this board to say your driveway has to be to the right side of your house. I think if somebody's going in there to build, they should have the right to say, I want my driveway in the middle or to the left. So can you answer that question, or should we come back to the board with it a later date? Because I feel this is unfair to residents wanting to go in there and build for there to be specifications from long ago that their driveway has to be to the right side of the house. They should have that option.
Chair Mitchell, Commissioner Townsend, this authorization, as you noted, was in 2004. Exclusive of Lot 13, I understand there are four remaining home pads that could be acted upon for development. The petition this evening is specific to Lot 13 that was stated in the HOA's authorization. In early dialogue, there was the, the contemplation of whether the modification should be broader to allow for the greater flexibility at the staff level if those future four, single-family lot developments were to want to shift from the approved driveway locations. But the petition that came in and authorized by the HOA was specific to Lot 13. From notice, public notice of this application, also additional discussions with the HOA, a couple of local surveyors, you know, it was from a proactive standpoint, trying to learn from this experience to ensure that those lot owners are aware of the authorized driveway locations. But staff certainly, if, if we garnered an additional application or supplemental request by the HOA to look to, to strike or modify that condition of approval, this board has that latitude and discretion to authorize it. Based upon what was noticed this evening, I don't believe it, it's a possibility to modify that condition broadly. But certainly, this board's prerogative to, to direct staff to work on scheduling an updated notice. We.
Okay, so what you're saying is that this is an HOA?
No. The homeowners association owns and manages a 25-foot common area situated between the private right-of-way tract and each individual, single-family home lot. The HOA has the legal authority to authorize in a petition because the driveway is situated within their common area. The authorization letter from the HOA was specific to this driveway, Lot 13. Therefore, what was noticed for this evening and the action requested this evening is specific to this lot. But of, of course, if the HOA were to want to broaden that to allow for greater flexibility at the staff level in the future, should modifications be proposed, staff can certainly coordinate that and bring it back before the board.
I, I just feel that it's wrong that somebody wanting to build a house has to come in and deal with staff for a driveway and go to a PUD and come before us. If they want to put the driveway to the left, they should have the option to do that versus it's saying to the right, so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
Along with your thoughts, I, you know, I did see this as a, as a tricky situation.
It's a hardship.
Number one, really, the, I think the survey was a mistake early on. It didn't really reflect the easement, so that was a challenge. But I did have the same conversation with Mr. Benton is that how many lots are left? Let's do a deeper dive on this thing so that no mistakes happen going forward. But when we, whenever we approve a PUD, you know, those go forward to, in perpetuity until whenever. And so, you know, I expect whatever we approve to be approved the way we said. But in this case, this was a strange one. And it was, it was where the easement was, it was a problem. So I'm, I'm on board with having staff, you know, reach out to those property owners, current and future, or even the HOA, to have that discussion on how to alleviate any kind of challenges like this going forward. It seems that all the other ones prior to this one didn't have a problem moving through the system. But I'm, I'm on board with trying to find a solution.
There's some residents in there that have their driveways to the opposite side and they were allowed to do it, so. This was an unusual one, I know, but still, I think we need to look into this. Commissioner Hutchinson?
Thank you. Well, I was gonna wait till y'all finished. And, and I agree, and having been on the board at that time, if I recall, it was that a lot of the tree mitigation issues came into play because it's so wooded it was originally before that lots were put in there. And it was a way of preserving that for, to get away from the mitigation cost. Now, having said that, I can tell you in all my years of being up here, I don't think I've ever seen us do this other than this one time.
I know.
Which to me, I'd like to delve further into it, but I'm gonna take it one step further because there is an additional cost to those, this person and the other four lots that are open there. So if the HOAs want to do that, if they are going to petition it, and I don't know how that's gonna work as we divulge it, we need to discuss that fact because it could have been done at a much less cost.
You talked about the application fee?
Yes, because if it was being able to be done as a minor, there's a huge difference.
Less hours, less detail.
And it didn't really take that lot. There was that one clause that seems to fit in there. I would be leery of saying, I mean, it's one of those, be careful what you ask for, and I don't want to set a precedence with it at the same time. But I don't know if, you know, we can specify if we want to discuss that part of it, that it only be to this particular lot for tonight and worry about the others because there's more, if you will, involved in that.
Yeah, I just want us to look at it. I don't think it's fair to the residents.
Mr. McIntyre? Would it be feasible for us to, because of what was enlightened to us this evening, to reduce the application fee, you know, because it was less level of detail? Was there less hours spent? Or are we gonna sock it to the guy for 2,500 bucks?
Well, I think there, I think there's two issues there. The, the going forward, looking at it, I think the direction to staff as part of the, looking at the overall and the future for the four lots, et cetera, they should also, it seems like from the board's discussion, look at the fee and whether this should be a major or minor. So that, I think, can be done on a going-forward basis. The question about tonight is a little more interesting. Again, clearly, the staff doesn't have authority to modify the board's fee. The board sets the fee. I think the thing you always want to make sure you do is treat people fairly. You, you don't want to, you know, charge one person X and one person Y and it's the same kind of thing. So if you were to try to give relief here, this is a, it seems like a unique circumstance. It does on the face of it. I think somebody said we've never done this before and I, I don't recall that either. And so if, if we were to try to give some relief, I don't know what the difference between a major and a minor fee is. You know, I, I don't know what that dollar amount is. But if, if we do decide to do that and get relief, we need to put on the record why we think this is unique and why we think the relief is appropriate so it doesn't have a, you know, an effect on, on the other people that have maybe more major PUD adjustments. That's really not what we're talking about here. So that's the kind of thing I think we have to be concerned about when we talk about reducing fees.
Did you want to chime in, Mr. Benton?
Chair Mitchell, members of the board, and thank you, Mr. McIntyre. The application fee for a minor adjustment to a PUD is $1,350 collectively. The fee for a major adjustment to a PUD is $2,600 plus advertising fees. As discussed this evening and some of the unique characteristics, this scope of, of review would have typically been a minor adjustment involving the same, you know, equivalent staff evaluation in coordination with the DRC, with the exception of the added public hearing requiring an action by this board. It's important to note that the applicant carries the costs of all advertising fees, placement of a sign on the property, and reimbursement for the display ad and mailed notice. Therefore, for entertaining kind of the unique circumstances, maybe it's, it's the, at the board's discretion or decision to guide staff to classify this as a minor adjustment with the, the caveat that it did entail the public hearing. Of course, the applicant being responsible for reimbursement of any fees associated with that. But that could, where it's not necessarily adjusting a fee, but classifying or guiding staff, to staff as to the classification of how this, this application should be.
From a major to a minor.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm comfortable with that. I don't know about the rest.
So I'm just gonna ask if I don't make the motion because we have to public comment.
Yeah.
If somebody else makes the motion, to please make it include that this can go down to the 1350 to the applicant.
As a minor.
As a minor, so that he can be credited back some of the money, whoever makes the motion. Thank you.
Well, before we get to that again, and thank you, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak now? Please, sir, come up and identify yourself and thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank Commissioner Hutchinson and Cory Benton for all the help they did in getting this where we are today. Ms. Townsend has hit the nail on the head. I tried to get this in the beginning to change the wording. If the county would change the wording and we wouldn't be into a PUD change, just changing the article that where it was written with the commissioners. And I was told we couldn't do that. So we filed for the major and did all the stuff we did. I'm appreciative of you lowering the fee, but what I'm saying is there should have never been a fee. You should have been able to handle it internally. But I do thank you very much for helping me out.
Thank you.
There's only, as far as going ahead with this development, there's only one lot left to develop. All the rest are built, except for mine and one other. And so there's no reason to change the PUD for us. We're done. Everybody in, in the development, most of the people in development had asked about moving their driveway and were given a no. Nobody pursued it as far as I did, and this has taken six months to get here. And I have not dug a hole yet. I have cleared it, but we're, we're gonna go forward here after this and get a house built. But thank you very much.
And congratulations.
William Haynes.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone? Is there anyone else from the public that would like to discuss this subject matter? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing.
I'll make a motion to approve and then the, I want it also to state for the record that it can go down to a minor to the $1,350 for the applicant.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Townsend, a second by Commissioner Hutchinson.
Just a question. Commissioner Townsend, will you add in the language that Mr. McIntyre had suggested that it clarifies what that reasoning was?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a minor adjustment.
Also, just to be clear, Mr. Chair, does this include the advertising costs in the expense of the public hearing? That would typically be a part of the, a part of the cost, if I understand the process.
But if it was a, if it was a minor, he wouldn't have had to advertise, correct? So I-
I thought that's what he was saying. Go ahead, Corey.
Corey, if it's a minor, they don't have to advertise, do they? It isn't done administratively?
They've already planned.
They're planning.
Chair Mitchell, members of the board, that is correct.
So my motion will be for the $1,350.
Okay.
For the, for the amount of the minor.
But they were discussing the advertising cost.
But if it was a minor, he wouldn't have had to pay for the advertising to begin with.
So part of your motion was to-
So my motion is for the minor of the $1,350 is what it would be.
Okay. Second, Commissioner Hutchinson?
I just want to make sure, I thought Mr. Benton said that he had to pay, he had to pay that all separate. Was that paid to us first, and we then went back to and placed it, or did he have to pay that separate to the newspaper and stuff for the public notice and so forth?
Commissioner-
The sign and all that kind of stuff.
Commissioner Hutchinson, the sign is paid directly to the sign company, or paid for directly to the sign company, which has already been covered by the applicant, and then the mailed notice and display ad in the local newspaper is approximately $325, which is, will be invoiced, or would be invoiced, depending upon the action.
To whom? To the county or to the applicant?
To the county. The county paid the cost for postage, preparation of the letters, and the payment to the newspaper, approximately $325 for advertising fees.
So again, if this would have been a minor, it would be $1,350, and that's my motion, is to keep it at the $1,350. If he did not have to change this and go to the major, he wouldn't have had to be inconvenienced and went through all this to begin with. So my motion is to pass and to take it to the $1,350 cost for the minor.
My second stance.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Congratulations. God bless. Okay, moving right along, we're going to number three, which is a comprehensive plan and text map amendments on urban service boundaries. And who will be presenting? You two, Corey? Thank you.
Good evening again, Chair Mitchell, members of the board, and Corey Benton, Planning Manager, for the record. For this evening's adoption hearing for the proposed urban service boundary comprehensive plan amendments that include both amendments to the comprehensive plan map exhibits as well as text associated with the comprehensive plan. This evening's public hearing was duly noticed in the local newspaper with the display ad highlighting all components of the proposal. And the Board of County Commissioners took action at the June 7th meeting to transmit this amendment package in a three-to-one vote to the state as well as corresponding review agencies for expedited review. This evening's hearing is the adoption hearing for the two parts, two components. Expansion of the urban service boundary, the South County area, as well as adoption, establishment of a planning study area with two sub-areas for the Central and Northern County areas, running on a parallel western boundary of approximately Header Canal Road. This is a technical display of all of the amendments, particular sections of the county's comprehensive plan, including the future land use map, the urban service boundary map, and miscellaneous sections of the county's comprehensive plan. This evening's modifications are being presented based upon imminent growth in the county. Since adoption of the urban service boundary in 1990 to today, the county's population has more than doubled, represented by approximately 119% growth in population, and a projection out to 2045 of an additional 79% growth in population and growth in employment of comparable The immediate expansion of the urban service boundary contemplated by this amendment is isolated to the South County area, as highlighted in the black dash line, where projected population growths have been anticipated for some time and are underway, because much of this area is already within the City of Port St. Lucie's limits, with approximately 13,000 acres within this expanded area under the county's unincorporated jurisdiction. The urban service boundary is a planning and a policy tool to help guide for and assess growth projections, investments in infrastructure, and ensuring that there's an effective and efficient deployment of resources in our community, in a partnership of the local government, neighboring jurisdictions, and the private sector as development proposals are presented. In the South County expansion area, we can tell from this exhibit, which doesn't include all of the planned infrastructure and facilities, but some of the existing facilities, both schools, fire districts, libraries, parks, recreation, recreational amenities, and planned roadways and networks, supporting transportation as our community continues to grow and evolve in, with the robust activities in South County. So this urban service boundary expansion encompasses the majority of the City of Port St. Lucie's annexation areas, with exception of the McCarty Ranch Preserve that extends out toward Glades Cut Off, and then unincorporated areas where we have prospective development applications looking to expand and build off of the investment in public facilities and the job growth in South County. It's important to highlight with this evening's adoption hearing that an action to amend and modify the urban service boundary does not take an action to change the future land use category or designation of lands in the county. Those particular requests in the future would be evaluated on their own merit in accordance with the county's adopted comprehensive plan goals, objectives, and policies, and Florida statute with collaborative review comparable to the amendment package this evening. This is highlighted within the immediate expansion area, roughly 13,000 acres are in the unincorporated area, the majority of which are within our agricultural five zoning and comprehensive plan future land use map category, but there are some pockets of institutional public facilities and industrial development in those areas. And the City of Port St. Lucie, we're familiar with the community development down in Southern Groves, Tradition, Western Grove, that's planning for approximately 50,000 households, as well as expansion of industry, job growth, and activity that we heard additional detail from Mr. Treadwell this evening about, and how our community is collaborating to plan and accommodate for our popularity, but also the investment that policymakers have made to diversify our community, ensure, you know, access to recreation, level of service supports for quality of life in our public facilities, and to have a well-rounded, well-planned This is, again, the advertised boundary for the South County urban service expansion. And then this exhibit presents the planning study area with the two sub-districts in Central County and North County, out to, again, a north-south line parallel to Header Canal, with the respective acreages around 5,000 acres for the North County planning area and the Central County planning area, about 18,300 acres. These areas being very unique and distinct in their own way, the Central County area being, being home to many rural hobby farms, western estates, and other citrus activities, with a lot of north-south roadway investments from the county, some preserves and county investment in storm water. No utilities generally in that area today. And then North County area, which there's been a lot of interest in development and growth around the Injero and I-95 interchange, with the county and state's investment in improvements to Injero Road and extension of water and other infrastructure out west. So the planning study areas in the package this evening are coupled with evaluation criteria and particular policies in the comprehensive plan to identify the strategies and what we're anticipating to evaluate and consider through this endeavor. The timeline for returning the planning study area findings to the Board of County Commissioners is, has a deadline of October of 2024, in alignment with the county's required notification of an evaluation appraisal review for our comprehensive plan. We've been partnering with the Church Coast Regional Planning Council to help establish and develop a framework to launch those planning study areas, to consider what type of policy changes, any additional updates to the urban service boundary, and how our community continues to plan in collaboration with our partners. And of course, involvement of stakeholders, the community in that planning process as the future envision of our community continues to evolve and develop. The following slides highlight some of the evaluation criteria being introduced in the county's comprehensive plan to ensure that policy and framework is provided for how the planning study would be conducted, the findings, and the future analysis presented to the Board of County Commissioners in the future for additional modifications to the comprehensive plan. Again, back in June, after an action by the Planning and Zoning Commission recommending approval, the Board of County Commissioners acted to transmit this amendment package to the state and corresponding reviewing members. We've received support back and letters of no objection from the reviewers. We did receive some technical comments from the Florida Department of Transportation, District Four offices, highlighting some of the county's comprehensive plan policies related to urban development, mix of uses, and ensuring that there's an efficient outlay of capital investment or public expenditures to serve additional growth in our community, ensure that there's a balance to support transportation, planning, access to goods and services, jobs and employment, to avoid urban sprawl. Staff submitted analysis based upon that feedback in our staff report. And this evening, based upon consistency with our county comprehensive plan and Florida statutes, staff is recommending the Board of County Commissioners adopt ordinance 2022-015, adopting the comprehensive plan amendment set to revise the urban service boundary and establish the planning study area and enact the corresponding objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan.
Any questions of Mr. Benton?
I just want to clarify something. Corey, did you say that this does not include McCarty Ranch?
The urban service boundary expansion would include the entryway to McCarty Ranch, but not the mass of McCarty Ranch.
Okay.
Any other questions, Corey? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Would anyone from the public like to speak on this subject matter?
Good evening, Commissioners. Again, Brian Nolan, for the record, representing Piro Family Farms in this. They have a large land holding in the agricultural limited services planning area portion of the study. Just looking forward to working with you and your staff, again, as we work through the planning area studies. They have a vested interest in what's going on, as you know, they're a large farming family. And just look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, this is a public hearing. Would anyone else from the public like to talk on this subject matter? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. This is an adoption hearing. Do I have a motion?
We have approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hutchinson, a second by Commissioner Townsend. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Benton. Next is number five, Joseph Miller's petition for comprehensive plan.
Four.
Uh, four, I'm sorry.
It's a big, yeah, you might have the fresh one.
I do.
Good evening, Chair Mitchell and members of the board. For the record, my name is Jody Kugler, Senior Planner with the Planning and Development Services Department. Tonight, I'll be presenting Agenda Item 9C4 and 9C6, two petitions submitted by Colter in hearing on behalf of Meritized Homes for an amendment to the future land use from residential urban, residential medium, and commercial to a mixed-use development with subpolicies and rezone from the RS2 and commercial general zoning districts to a planned unit development with a concurrent preliminary site plan for the development of 160 multifamily residential townhomes subdivision to be known as Tidewater Planned Unit Development. Both items require a separate public hearing and action by the board. In accordance with the public notice requirements outlined in Section 11.00.03 of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, an advertisement for this public hearing was placed in the local newspaper on Thursday, July 28, 2022. In addition, notices were mailed to the adjacent property owners located within 500 feet of the subject properties, and a sign was placed on the subject property. The parcel is outlined in red and situated along the west side of US, of South US Highway One. The site is bordered by a single-family residential, general, commercial parcels, and the existing Rego Dodge automobile dealership to the north. To the west, the site is bordered by an existing single-family homes and vacant single-family residential zone parcels adjacent to open space area. To the south of subject parcels is a vacant commercial area with small commercial out parcels to the southeast and borders South US One to the east. The designated future land use for the subject parcels are residential medium, residential urban, and commercial. The applicant is requesting a future land use amendment to reclassify the land use category to a mixed-use development. The proposed comprehensive plan amendment would change the future land use map designation from the collective 18.73 acres to a mixed-use category with specific use designations for commercial and residential to allow up to nine units per acre. The subject property is currently zoned commercial, general, and residential suburban districts. The proposed zoning amendment would change the official zoning map designation to rezone the 16.37-acre subset of the subject property from the residential single-family up to allowing up to two units per acre and commercial general to a planned unit development with a preliminary site plan. The proposed 2.5-acre out parcel is to the northwestern corner of the subject site and is to retain its commercial zoning, commercial general zoning destination. The 16.37-acre preliminary site plan includes 160 townhome lots within the Tidewater PUD subdivision. The applicant states that the proposed plan meets the intent of the goals, objectives, and policies of the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan by the creation and/or preservation of affordability for anticipated future residents through the implementation of six-unit and eight-unit buildings made up of four two-bedroom, two-two bedrooms, and four one-bedroom layouts, allowing for a variety of housing. The applicant is requesting to deviate from the, from Section 7.0.03 of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code building spacing formula. The 2.5-acre commercial out parcel in red is not part of the preliminary plan and would require a separate site plan approval. The preliminary plan demonstrates meeting the required 35% open space outlined in pink and purple, including a stormwater management lake in the center of the development. The lake is designed to ensure proper drainage and runoff flows on, on the site to prevent flooding and any other potential issues that could arise with a change in drainage pattern. The lake will also have a 14,433-square-foot latatorial zone with native vegetation, which will serve as a natural habitat for small native wildlife, as well as an upland transition zone to buffer the latatorial zone from the adjacent residents. This supplets the two different typical lot types, a 20-foot-by-90-foot lot with a single-car garage and eight-foot-wide driveway, and a 24-foot-by-90-foot lot with a double-car garage- garage and eight-foot wide driveway, and a 24-foot by 90-foot lot with a double-car garage garage and a 16-foot wide driveway. As a condition of approval, staff is recommending a minimum 10-foot driveway for pedestrian safety, ensuring that the exiting, entering and exiting a vehicle onto hard surface. The preliminary landscape is, plan is designed to improve the proper, the project perimeter, creating the strategic yet aesthetic buffering between the residential neighborhood and the adjacent South US Highway One right-of-way. This will promote active pedestrian transportation such as walking and cycling, as well as recreational usage of the perimeter sidewalk. The internal sidewalk network will ensure residents within the planned unit development also have access to the exterior sidewalk system, ensuring that the potential for people to walk and, walk to and from from the future commercial parcel along the US One corridor. One of the much-needed public benefits includes the replacement of the existing four-inch sewer line with an eight-inch sewer line for approximately 5,121 linear feet of sanitary sewer force main located on the west side of US One right-of-way, which connects to the existing Fort Pierce Utilities Authority manhole. This new sewer line force main will able to, will be able to serve undeveloped and underdeveloped parcels south of Midway Road, Fort Pierce Utility Authority System Limits. Access to the site is proposed via one-way ride-in, ride-out driveway connection onto US One. The proposed ride-in and ride-out driveway will be supported by a southbound right-turning lane. Left turn movements will be offset north and south of the project ride-in and ride-out driveway on US One. At sunrise, sunshine Boulevard and Easy Street, drivers going northbound will be required to perform a U-turn movement. The project will be gated. A school bus loop will be provided outside the entrance gates with sidewalk connectivity for students to traverse to and from safely to the bus stop. The community is proposing a recreational amenity that includes a cabana and a pool area for future residents within the Tidewater subdivision. In accordance to the public notice requirements outlined in Section 11.00.03 of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, notices and response forms were mailed to adjacent property owners located within 500 foot feet of the subject property. Of the 23 notices mailed out, the Planning and Development Services Department received no responses. The applicant did not hold a neighborhood meeting, however, neighborhood meetings are not required but strongly encouraged. On July 21, 2022, the Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as the local planning agency, held a public hearing and voted unanimously to for a recommendation for both petitions. The preliminary planned development site plan recommendation included conditions presented by staff with the request to increase the minimum driveway width to nine feet wide. After the meeting, the applicant provided a correspondence to staff consenting to the condition of approval number three to extend the driveway to a minimum of 10 feet wide. The proposed future land use map amendment conforms to the standards of review as set forth in St. Lucie County Land Development Code, Florida statutes, and is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan. Staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve the future land use amendment from residential urban, residential medium, and commercial to a mixed-use development land use designation. The proposed planned unit development rezone and preliminary site plan conforms to the standards of review as set forth in St. Lucie County Land Development Code, Sections 11.06.03 and 11.02.07, and is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the St. Lucie Com, St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan. Staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve the Tidewater Development and Rezone Preliminary Plans subject to the conditions set forth in the resolutions. Prior to issuance of any building permits, a final plat must be approved by the Board of County Commissioners. The community clubhouse or similar use facility shall be consistent with the community architectural standards of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, Section 7.10.24. All residential driveways shall be a minimum of 10 feet wide. Before issuance of vegetation removal permit or exemption, updated survey to determine the current activity status of the onsite offspring nest shall be provided. Should the nest be deemed active, the nest has eggs or flightless young, then an incidental take permit from the United States Fish and Wildlife Services is required. Before issuance of a vegetation removal permit or exemption, 100% survey to determine the presence of the state-protected gopher turtles and state-protected burrowing owls shall be required. If any gopher turtles burrows are identified within 25 feet of the proposed disturbance, all tortoises shall be relocated per the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission Protocol. If any burrow owls are identified, coordination with the Fish and Wildlife and United States Fish and Wildlife Service shall be required. Before the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, all Category 1 invasive plant species shall be eradicated from the site.
This concludes staff's presentation. We do have the applicant in the audience and has a brief presentation as well.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. Would anyone from the audience like to speak on this subject matter? These are number four and six. Seeing none, I'll close public hearing. Now, number six is quasi-judicial.
Mr. Chair, I've spoken with, we're gonna have to vote on them separate anyway, right?
Yes.
Yes. I've only talked to staff and the representative walking up.
Okay.
Staff.
Kathy.
Staff and the representative from Colter.
Have Mr. Soro, but I also think I spoke about this with them, both, with the developer too during the Azoya presentation briefly.
Okay.
Yeah, I want to think I did, I think he was in, wasn't he?
And myself, staff and Mr. Soro.
Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Dan Soro with Land Planning Firm of Color and Hearing. I'll keep this brief. I've got to get home and see the kiddos before they start school on the first day tomorrow. So thank you for the opportunity to be here. You know, I, I would like to enter into this presentation for both Agenda Item 9C4 and 9C6. Staff, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the, the going over the details with me. Here with me this evening, in our development team and with Meritage Home is both Mike D'Amelio and, and Dante Fregari, also with our civil engineer, Mr. Tim Foster, and our traffic engineer, Sean McKenzie. This is Tidewater's first townhome community in St. Lucie County. It's their second project in, in St. Lucie County. Meritage does two things very well, single-family home communities and Tidewater with the multifamily home community. So this is their, their newest townhome community. As you know, the project site is located on the major north-south corridor of the county, US One. It's a small site, just under 20 acres. It's currently undeveloped and, and consisting mostly of invasive exotics. Most of the people go home or leave home coming from Midway Road from the north and from the south in the city of Port St. Lucie limits. Excuse me. This slide shows the neighboring properties. You can see most of the commercial uses along US One with Arigo Dodge just to our north. We've got a public storage across US One to the east and, and a few commercial parcels located to the south. We are retaining a two-and-a-half acre commercial parcel within the existing site, so the overall residential development's going to be 16 acres with the two-and-a-half acre retained commercial parcel. The, the existing land use is split. There's both a residential and commercial land use. Same with the zoning, it's split also with a commercial zoning and a residential zoning. What we're proposing is to change the red to yellow so that we can do a majority of the site as residential. It's about 14 acres, and then the two acres would retain that, that, that red land use, which is the commercial. So the whole site will be MXD, which is a little bit more appropriate for this mid-block commercial type, type use. The existing zoning, as you see on the screen, also is, is red for commercial. We're going to retain about two-and-a-half acres of that as our commercial out parcel, and the rest will be used for residential townhome community. As you know, your, 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 your code right now, when you look at the zoning code, it's 100-foot lot minimum for multifamily. If you're going to do a, a single-family lot size, it's a 75-foot lot size minimum. So really, your code requires me to go down to a PUD zoning for this type of application. You can't do a fee simple platted townhome lot with the existing code without going to a PUD. So that's why the developer is asking for this. As you know, there are many benefits to the PUD, greater landscape and buffering, master stormwater system, utilities are also being provided. So, so that's why we chose that mechanism within your, within your code. The overall site plan does have a controlled access, a ride-in, ride-out off of US One. It is gated so that no one can just walk into the community off of US One. You will have to be a resident with a barcode, and it will be a secured access location. There is an emergency access to Arigo Dodge on the north. Also, your code requires 35% of our total acreage to be open space. So you see the green highlighted area, which shows, you know, a little bit over six acres of our site just dedicated to, to open space. And then we, you know, located our cabana bath building and our pool overlooking the lake. It's, it's front and center right when you drive into the community, so it's used as a, as a marketing tool, but also it'd be nice to sit out on the pool deck and overlook the lake with the fountains, kind of adds to the overall experience of the community. This slide shows the drainage and the open space for the project. You know, we, we relocated a lot of our sable palms and going through the tree mitigation exercise with your ERD department, locate a lot of that vegetation against the latorals in the lake area, so it'll help the environment, help, help provide some of that buffering from, from the residences looking across the lake to, to each other. And also, you can look at the dry detention located along US One, creates that separation from that townhome building to the existing commercial uses along US One. A little bit closer view of the commercial parcel, I was talking with our engineer earlier, and, you know, we're extending approximately 5,300 linear feet of sewer. We're actually upsizing, so our project only needs about a four-inch pipe. We're upsizing it to eight-inch pipe. So that's a huge benefit to everyone along that corridor, you know. Environmentally, you're going to take people off septic, give them the opportunity to hook up the sewer, but it also, you know, provides for the capacity for, for anyone along that corridor, which we're, we're grateful to provide for the county. But you can see the, the commercial out parcel don't have a end user in mind right now that will be marketed appropriately for, for that use along US One. And then a closer view of the site plan, you know, really shows that the sidewalks continue throughout the community, paver driveways in lieu of asphalt. It's a little higher end of a product. As, as Ms. Kugler pointed out earlier, we are in agreement with the 10-foot driveway, single driveway distances, so that was something that we were happy to do after reevaluating the project and the request. And we also have ample guest parking, which is important for a townhome community like this. Two building sizes, we've got a six-unit building and an eight-unit building. One correction, though, on, on staff's presentation, they are all three-bedroom units with two-and-a-half baths, so, so that is something that, excuse me, that we are providing, and, and this slide just shows the typical lot size. As, as, as was pointed out, we're doing 160 townhomes with 20-foot lots and 24-foot lots. So in conclusion, we're, we're, we're in agreement with the conditions of approval that were, that were given on the project. The DRC Committee did recommend approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission, I think, gave unanimous approval, and we'd like to ask for your favorable support tonight. On behalf of my team, any of us will be here able to answer any questions, should you have any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I have one question addressed?
Sure.
And, and it's mostly to deal with the traffic up on US One. And if you can just kind of give me some detail and walk us all through, I know you've been up to DOT and everything else, and they've got a sign-off on the US One being their road, but I've got concerns, especially if you've headed north, you can only make a right-hand turn out of there, which means you've got to go up to Easy Street and make the U-turn and go back. Is that, am I correct?
Yes, Commissioner, and I think Mr. Sean McKenzie with McKenzie Engineering is probably more qualified to answer that question than I am. So Sean, if you wouldn't mind just kind of explaining the methodology for, for that.
Thank you.
Correct. The Department of Transportation has done a number of studies and determined that it is a much safer movement for vehicles to make the right turn, go ahead downstream, and then make a U-turn at another location rather than being, making left turns out. So that's part of their access management policies and procedures. So that is what this community is going to be based on, is they'll be able to make a right-in and a right-out from the primary driveway to US One.
Okay. And they did the study there for Easy Street? And that's my concern is that intersection.
Right.
Because we've been in issues with the DOT already on improvements being done for that intersection, i.e. on the Easy Side Street.
Yes.
And they've been kind of pushed because there's some issues that have all come into play, so it's kind of gotten stalled, if you will. Help me get there, because it's not the project, it's the traffic part on there. Did they measure the, the turn, the left turn lane, i.e. to make that U-turn there, that it's going to be long enough to stack up with school buses?
So we did the study, and what we did is we recounted the, the peak season traffic that's out there on the roadway, added our traffic onto that, and then those results were reviewed by staff as well as the Department of Transportation, and there is adequate capacity in that southbound left turn lane for our cars, for school buses that are already making that movement and, and future movements as well. So, and, and one key component of that is that our traffic is outbound in the morning. Well, that's the opposite direction that Easy Street is working, because those are all working folks, and they're leaving Easy Street, they're not making that southbound left in, in the morning. So essentially, we're going in the opposite direction of traffic.
Okay, but it's still making the U, because they're not all headed south. They're going to go north and south, just like your residents would do.
Correct.
And that's why I'm concerned on that U-turn, because it gets, when you're coming off of Easy, you've got two lanes, I think, that go to the south and one lane that go, is it three?
There's, US One is three lanes in both directions.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But I'm coming off of Easy Street, so if I'm sitting at that light going onto US One, if I go south, there should be two turn lanes going south off on Easy Side and one that goes north.
And that might be something the department is looking at, but that's-
So like you haven't got a full okay yet from DOT, you're still in the process of-
So that's something that our TPO and the Department of Transportation are working through. Now, I know that there's a congestion management plan that was outlined years ago, and it did show essentially straightening out that intersection, getting rid of that sort of bubble.
Then you understand what I'm saying. I'm concerned making that turn when I've got nor, people from the, coming out on the northbound off of Easy.
There you go. There's this picture.
Okay. And you can see where Easy, if I've got coming through here-
Yeah.
-coming out and I've got northbound, because there needs to be signage up there for the residents coming out of Indian River Estates, because it is going to be a traffic change for them.
There's already a number of left turns occurring at that, that signalized intersection, and those folks headed southbound have a left turn arrow where they can make that-
That's heading southbound. My concern is the U-turn headed north, where they two conflict. Because what I'm concerned with is if I'm making that U-turn and I've got somebody on the, headed north coming off of Easy, the way this is lined up, will they be able to make it safely? Because a lot of them don't really stop, because you can turn right on red.
Correct.
So it's tap the brakes and go, I mean, let's be honest about it, it's tap the brake. And I'm not against the project, I'm just have some major concerns with this intersection.
Right, and they're, and they're gonna-
And I'm surprised DOT is saying okay.
Yeah, and, and it's just rules of the road. You've got to right turn on red after, after it's safe to receive-
I understand rules of the road, but in reality, that's how wrecks happen too. I understand rules of the road, but in reality, that's how wrecks happen, too. They don't get listened to. So, all right, that's all I needed to know.
Mr. Chair, while you're on traffic, since you're up there, can you go back to the graph that shows Sunshine, Arigo, and the commercial piece? Palm Grove has had a challenge with getting out of their, getting out of their property in general. So you own this other, this vacant piece of property that's going to be to the east that I'm looking here. So is there a conversation about locating a light there? Because you have the road that comes into Arigo, that's your, where your emergency access is, simply because you have the left turn, right turn crossing components in the middle of US-1? Here we go. So you see the little, well, you can see the left and you can see the right, what right, left coming south, going into Sunshine and Palm Grove back in there, and then the other coming north, making the left with that little barrier, that little median right there. So that would be an optimal place for a new light, and has that been discussed with FDOT? And as you're going to have, you're going to, if I look at this right, you have 160 units in there, and it's three bedrooms, that's 480 cars if you have, if everyone in the household has a car. So you're going to add 480 folks on and off the highway, and then you're going to have these folks trying to do this U-turn stuff. So what, if anything, has been discussed about a possible light there either now or in the near future? And I don't know, again, you didn't know what you're going to go in your commercial property, but that'll be another issue, trying to get in and out of that property.
Correct. So we've done, really, you know, evaluated this with FDOT and with your staff, and know there are no plans for any sort of traffic signal there. It's a directional opening. We see those all up and down US-1 and throughout the community. We did do an evaluation of the traffic there, again, looking at what's existing, looking at what's going to be there in the future, and adding our traffic. And there is adequate capacity to make that U-turn. US-1 is now a six-lane facility. There's plenty of capacity out there. There's enough gaps where those, you know, our residents will be able to make the U-turn safely and get into the community when this comes back through. For the commercial parcel, we did an assumption of a sort of generic commercial use when that comes back in for a specific use. I think we'll need to take a look at, you know, this all over again and make sure that, you know, we've got adequate capacity and safety improvements out there for the public.
I'm just going to put my concerns on the record, you know, because that is a difficult place, and then you have the people coming in, leaving Arigo in the same spot. So that's a major concern for me. So if we're done with the traffic, I'm going to switch back to Mr. Sorrow on the, let's see, on the stormwater treatment area. This is a, this area is historically wet, if I recall. And so is the capacity of the lake going to be able to handle all that impervious surface? And if so, how is the drainage plan set up with all the impervious service? And where does it discharge, or where would it ultimately discharge?
So the PUD, which is 16 acres, maybe you can bring up the slide, Jody, but 35% of it's open space. I think 15% of it is drainage. So we've got a wet detention pond and a dry detention pond, oversized for what this parcel actually needs to handle our drainage. Ultimate out, you know, we've got a series of drainage easements, which is going to collect the stormwater management and the rainfall, the storm events on the road, and pipe it and swale it to the center lake. Litorals are going to help the environment, but the drainage that this site is provided is more than adequate for the 160 town homes that are being provided.
So is the road a part of the drainage capacity? Meaning that if the, if there, you say you get a 20-inch rain in a five-day period and it just keeps coming, is the road then a part of the calculation as to where the water's going to go? There are some communities that were built back in the mid-2000s where the calculations for the 25-year, three-day storm included the roads. Well, the roads become impassable at a foot, foot and a half. So I'm asking, is that part of your calculation? Or does it all leave the roadway and enter into your stormwater system?
All, excuse me, all leaves the roadway, enters into our stormwater treatment areas.
Okay, and then where does it discharge to? Is that a canal to the back?
I'd like to ask Tim Foster with Caulfield and Wheeler to answer that.
I do, and Tim Foster, Caulfield and Wheeler with the engineer record for the project. Majority of the stormwater treatment is done on-site. There is a discharge overland to US-1 to DOT's right-of-way, although there's not much going to happen unless there's a severe storm event. So there is an outfall that was outside the development to take flow in a serious storm event, but the majority of the retention and treatment is on-site.
So will it go into that swale system that FDOT just did on the improvements on US-1?
It's going to be an overflow right next to a culvert box. We're making the historical discharge and limiting that, but there will be overland flow, probably about a 10-foot swale system that ties in the DOT system.
And DOT approves it?
We're in for permit with them, but yes. It's been talked about with them, and they're, they've reviewed the calculations, and we're working through the permitting with them.
And I will say that I'm glad that you changed your mind on the idea of going from eight-foot driveway to a 10-foot. We had our conversation this morning about the planning provisions for our engineering department, minimum standards, 10-foot wide, 16-foot long, because we're seeing vehicles that are larger, all these trucks, not that I own one, but they often don't fit into the driveway. So-
Completely understand.
And if it's a working folks-type townhouse community, you're going to see a lot of trucks.
We were trying to get as much landscaping and street trees in there to provide an environment that's more friendly, so that's why we were looking at the minimization of the driveways, but we've gone back to the 10, so that works with our plan.
Any other questions? I'm good. What else? Been so long, I don't know where we are in this process.
We have to-
We'll open this to public comment, and this is on four and six, correct? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, I'll close public comment.
Mr. Chair, I will make the motion to approve, because we have to vote them separate on 9C4, which is the Future Land Use Map Amendment, and ask the board, for those of us that sit on the TPO, to make this a priority, the issue on the traffic on US-1. I agree that the capacity is there, but we all know that's just waiting, and it keeps getting bumped back. So that'll be my motion.
And we just talked about that also at TPO recently, so I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll move on to number six.
Mr. McIntyre, does he need to open and close it again for six?
No, I think we held a hearing for both.
That's not, okay.
If there is anybody else, they should, if there's any-
Well, just to be overly cautious, does anyone here like to speak on number six? If not, I'll close public comment.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Townsend, we have a second by Commissioner Bartz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move right along to number five.
Good evening, Chair Mitchell, members of the board. Again, Corey Benton, Planning Manager, for the record. I am joined up here by the newest addition to the Planning Division, well, second newest addition to the Planning Division, Irene Settlemeyer, Senior Planner, joining the Planning and Development Services team.
Welcome to the team.
Thank you. Glad to be here. So good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board of County Commissioners. For the record, Irene Settlemeyer, Senior Planner with the Planning and Development Services Department. I'm honored to make my first presentation to you this evening, and want to thank Planning Manager Corey Benton for his work and direction on the staff report and this presentation. This is a public hearing regarding the proposed amendment of the Future Land Use Map Loop Road Mixed Use Activity Area. Because the land area that is subject of the amendment is under 50 acres, it qualifies as a small-scale amendment. So there is no transmittal public hearing before you, only this hearing, the adoption hearing. So notice of the public hearing was published in the St. Lucy News Tribune, and a notice was mailed to 17 owners of property in the vicinity of the subject property, and a sign was posted on the property. So public notice took place as it is required to. The property is in the northeast quadrant of the county, about a half a mile east of Kings Highway and maybe 2,000 feet north of Orange Road. Orange Road is right off the map. Orange Avenue, excuse me. The eastern boundary of the property fronts on Jenkins Road. The property does not actually abut and has no frontage on Floyd Johnson Road. There is a canal and a roadway, a canal and the roadway, 75-foot right-of-way that separates the property from Floyd Johnson Road. And the St. Lucy County Property Appraiser characterizes the current use as agriculture. The subject property has the Mixed Use Future Land Use Map, as does the property to the south. The north, east, and west of the property, the future land use designation is residential urban, up to five dwelling units an acre. Both the subject property and the property to the south are located within the Loop Road Mixed Use Activity Area. The 35 acres, the 35 acres that are the subject of this amendment are low intensity, and the 57 acres to the south are the medium-intensity area. It's just this 35 acres that is the subject of the proposed amendments to this text here, which is part of the map. So this shows the proposed amendments to the policy. In red and shown with strikeout is the proposed deletion. And that, we are proposing that the requirement that 50% commercial, 50% of the development at the northeast corner of the property be commercial, and that a combination of 25% office and 25% institutional constitute the remainder of the development on that property. And instead, the blue and underlined is the proposed text, and it is that light industrial warehouse land uses, including flex space buildings, will, let me just read it. The mixed, the mixed low-intensity district will include light industrial warehouse land uses, including flex space buildings. Industrial development shall be approved through the planned non-residential development process and shall provide a buffer zone to properly buffer the adjacent non-residential uses and shall preserve environmental resources. Moving forward through the planned non-residential development process requires that a site plan be approved, a preliminary site plan be approved at the time of the zoning. So this is the proposed text as it will read if the proposed amendments are adopted. The mixed low-intensity district will include light industrial slash warehouse land uses, including flex space buildings. Industrial development shall be approved through the planned non-residential development process and shall provide a buffer to properly buffer the adjacent non-industrial uses and shall provide, shall preserve environmental resources. So this slide depicts several things. This green is the subject parcel, and the thicker black line shows the Jenkins Road Special District Area Plan. This arch, or arced, curved, thinner black line is the airport overlay zone, being about two miles from the airport. That zone does not have a lot of impact on this area. We're at the outskirts of the zone. So these are, the different colored areas are development proposals that are currently under review. The bright pink sites are site plan applications. So this is Eagle Bend, and it proposes some 1,200 dwelling units. Over here is Pineapple Grove, proposing 400 single-family residential lots. Over here is industrial space, some 363, 364,000 square feet of industrial space, and then some other developments. The yellow are petitions to either rezone or change the Future Land Use Map. This is the KRE site, and they are proposing to rezone about 150 acres from residential urban to industrial, and then some 60 acres of residential urban and industrial to high-density residential and a small piece of commercial. So the purpose of showing this map is to show, one, the intensity of the development proposals coming through, but also that it's, people are asking for and wanting to develop residential uses and industrial uses, and there's not a lot of demand for commercial uses such as offices or retail. So that helps support the permission that industrial, light industrial uses be permitted here and flex space be permitted here. So the next slide also shows the Jenkins Road Special Area Plan, and this, again, the subject parcel depicts the planned roadway for this area. Now, there are some changes and some evaluation and maybe some proposed amendments to this may be coming forward, but this demonstrates that there is a fairly vigorous road plan in effect to anticipating the development in the area and planning to accommodate it. So the Planning and Zoning Commission considered this matter on July 21, and they voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to you. The staff's recommendation is that the Board of County Commissioners approve the Future Land Use Map Amendment because it is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the St. Lucy County Comprehensive Plan. And that concludes the brief presentation of a more detailed staff report that you have received, and Corey and I are glad to answer any questions that you have.
Does anyone from the DIAS have any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair, you brought up the roadway area. The Jenkins Road area is currently under study. Did I notice in one of the, it's hard for me to see, but one of the slides showed a partial right-of-way. It didn't seem like it went the whole length of the property. We're going to have to acquire the right-of-way in the future for this entire roadway if we're going to expand it. So, and Commissioner Hutchinson, you know, this is something you've talked about at great length.
Those roadways, when this was all planned, were all to be put in by the developers as they come through.
And it's all-
It's not we find it.
Right, but we're still looking at the Jenkins Road sections all the way from the south and north, and we're going to have to get that right-of-way.
From the south of Orange Avenue up to the north, tying into Taylor Dairy? That's correct, but nobody's came through. You've got to remember, this was all done during the height of the-
Back in 2003, '04?
Yeah. Well, it was really more like '05, '06, and then the recession hit, and all of those things went away. This plan was done during all of that because of the influx of people weren't interested in developing here.
Well, if not now, we may be asking for the right-of-way in the future, so it might be something we have to keep an eye on. Because with all that you just said, as the development in that area, we're going to have to have the road capacity in the future.
Well, I think as those developments are coming through, this plan's already there, so there, anybody who's wanting to develop in there knows those roads are there.
It's in existence, they already know.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from, from the DIAS?
Plus, you have to remember, excuse me, I'm sorry, Chris, a lot of this is in the city, and if they're going into the city for development, all bets are off.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this subject matter? Mr. Curry?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Board members. For the record, Brad Curry-
Good afternoon, I'm in trouble.
I'm sorry, good evening. For the record, Brad Curry, the E.C., representing the applicant in their quest, staff did an excellent job presenting. Irene did a great job, I didn't realize it was her first time here, you can tell she's a veteran planner.
Good job.
You guys are fortunate to have her. With me here tonight is Joey Miller and his wife, the landowner, and also Richard and Lori Tamboni are here as well, they're going to be the developers of the property. You may know, have heard their names before, they've been involved down in, in Port St. Lucy, the Jobs Corridor, so it's a good addition to the county. We're excited about coming here and be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Again, this is a public hearing, anyone else from the public like to speak on this subject matter? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing.
I'll make a motion to approve, and I just want to say that I'm glad to see this finally happening. It's bringing it all into what needs to be in that area with the zoning and stuff, too, so it's a good, it's a good plan, and again, congratulations, you did a good job your first time.
Second.
I had good direction.
And we have a second from Commissioner Bartz, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That concludes the general, I'm sorry, the public hearing portion of tonight, so we're going to go to 10A1, which is the county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this item relates to a proposed pass-through of a Fort Pierce Utilities Authority water and wastewater rate increase as well as Florida Power and Light Company rate increases. These are, we're proposing to pass those increases through to our county water and wastewater customers. On, our utility, in some cases, buys water and wastewater from FPUA on a bulk basis, not in every case, but in a lot of cases, and so we're, we got notified in June of this year, the county administrator received a letter from FPUA indicating that they were implementing a 10% rate increase, I believe in July, and then a 10% in October. We, we have attached a copy of the letter along with their rate resolutions to our, our rate, so we can show that. We have a charter in our district that provides that we are to pass through any rate increases from our bulk providers to our customers, so we've attached a resolution which if adopted would revise the county's water and wastewater rates to implement the pass-through of the FPUA rate increase and the FPL rate increase. Staff recommends approval. The county's Public Utilities Director is available to answer specific questions about the rates or anything related to the proposed rate increase.
Again, Mr. McIntyre, this is simply a pass-through, correct?
Yes, sir, that's, that is accurate.
Does anyone have any questions from Mr. Landry?
Mr. Chair, I also just want to thank staff, though, for at least the thing that even though it's a pass-through, it is not one penny more-
Correct.
-than what Fort Pierce is, or FPUA, I'm sorry, it's, um-
No fluff.
No.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any announcements, Mr. Tipton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I did want to share that our next regular meeting is going to be on August 16th, our next regular meeting after that will be September 6th, and then as we get into September, we will have our two budget hearings, the first one is September 8th and the second one is September 22nd, so September is always a busy month for this board and will continue to be. The last thing I have is that, as, as you know, the, the board has a relationship with the New York Mets, and I do not know how many of our residents have actually thrown out the first pitch at City Field, but we happened to have one with us today that, that happened on Sunday, and we just wanted to show the, the video here just to check and see if the ball was dribbled in or it was a strike thrown, and so we just want to be able to check. This would be our chair, Sean Mitchell, on the mound. Signals a fastball. Right there, strike.
How many times, how many days did you practice about a time?
In all honesty, I did have my son-in-law two days at his house in New Jersey, we did practice. I did say my wife, as we were walking in the stadium, I said, Deb, I'm a little nervous, should I have a couple beers? And she said, did you practice with any alcohol in you? And I said, no, and she said, don't drink. Thank you, it was quite an honor, one of the biggest honors of my life, and it was a perfect time for me to get away with my family, so thank you. Commissioner Bartz?
Just real quick, Mr. Tipton, you talked about it earlier, school starts tomorrow, be safe, please watch for our kids on the roads, watch for the school buses. Ken?
Seeing nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.